We have established a quorum, we're gonna go ahead and start the special work session meeting. It is six o'clock. We have a quorum. Miss Say there.
Here.
Mr. Salinas.
Here.
Mr. LaFoy.
Present.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
And Mr. Salinas, I'm here. And Dr. Mackey.
Present.
Dr. Mackey, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, members of the board, we're starting our first budget process. There's several things that I'd like to go over. If you look on page three, and three and four is our proposed budget for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. What I'm gonna be recommending tonight is that for teachers' salaries and raise, that we go with option number three. Uh, starting pay would be forty-seven, eight fifty, or, I mean, forty?
It's on the first page. The back first is on the first.
Uh, right here, ma'am.
On the first page?
That's the handout. It's just, it's here.
Yes, sir. Starting pay will be for the bachelor's.
That's the one, the same thing.
You were looking at the master's differential.
Okay. Yeah, no, yeah, no, I'm looking at this right here.
What are you looking at?
Option three.
Yeah, uh, 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 option, option one is, is twelve hundred dollars for a bachelor teacher, and, uh, and fifteen hundred dollars for a master teach, master teacher.
Okay.
But look at that, that's, that's three. So we're looking at option number one, with the colored print, for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and option number three for two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. That will be a, a total of one point nine, uh, one point nine million. I'll be recommending that. And then the other thing that, uh, that I'll be recommending, uh, is the, uh, there was a sheet.
It's in there, sir.
Can you hear?
It's right here.
Yes.
First round?
First one?
You, you had it in your hand.
I had it in my hand?
Yes, sir. The midpoint increases are on top.
Yes, I know, but the portion I want to show them is not, not that, but...
The first round.
The first round.
Page three.
If you look on page three, of this paper right here, you had it in, look on page three.
Is you?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you look on page three, it says first round increase recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at, where it says professional educator, professional operation, clerical tech, uh, technical, and manual trade, a total of two hundred ninety, ninety-one thousand, and that is to increase the, the salaries that we will be in a competitive, uh, uh, range, uh, salary range for these individuals there, that catches them up, that's over ninety percent. Right now, at this time, they're presently under ninety percent. And this is Tasby's recommendation, uh, in two thousand ten, that we catch these individuals up. Now, if you look, you don't see individuals, you see positions. And so I would like to catch these positions up, uh, at this time. So there's three things that I'll be recommending. Number one is the bachelors and masters, uh, bachelors increase of twelve hundred, masters increase, increase of fifteen hundred, and the midpoint increase by pay grade, uh, I'd like to do that. And then the last list, you see a stipend list, uh, stipend list, and what I'll, what I will be recommending, this, the, uh, is, uh, staff members went through the stipend list, but I'll be recommending that the stipend remain the same for this year.
Is this changes on this one?
Oh, that's all changes, yes, it's all. But I'm just recommending the state of something.
Which is the yellow sheet?
No, what you have there is this year's current stipend list.
The green one is?
Yes, this is this year's current stipend list. Dr. Mackey will be recommending that we duplicate this for next year.
Yes, it'll remain the same. There's no changes.
Pay raises, free stipend.
For me?
Pay raises this year, but free stipend.
Correct.
Yes, yes. Pay ra, uh, pay raises for teachers, twelve hundred, masters fifteen hundred, and, uh, the manual trade to the midpoint, make sure that, as Tasby recommendation, we get them to the midpoint. That's the second thing. And the third thing is that the stipends remain the same, this year.
And also, uh, the step increase, Dr. Mackey?
Yes, step increase, that's good.
Right, and I'll clarify that.
Okay, because he, he, he said just the...
Yes, step increase and...
The stipend.
And step increase, stipends, and the twelve hundred for ma, bachelors and fifteen hundred for masters.
What's the total, what's the total dollar?
Pardon me?
Wait a minute, give me...
Okay.
You're recommending all three pages?
That's two point six.
Right here? This?
It's one point nine, so it's two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
No, no, no.
Was how?
No, 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 no. No, I recommended number one, option number one, and option...
Which is the step increase?
Step increase, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Step increase, and option number three.
Which is the fifteen hundred dollar...
Fifteen hundred for the masters.
Masters differential.
You're not re, you're not recommending twelve hundred for the bachelor's, you said you...
Yeah, I see it.
No, it, it...
So then it's all three pages?
No.
No.
Okay, then where am I missing?
The second one doesn't apply.
Option one...
Option, option number one...
It's step increase.
It says step increase, including twelve hundred dollars.
Including twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, then I wrote on the wrong page.
Okay, now, go to page number three, would be, uh...
The differential.
Option three, masters, fifteen hundred dollars.
Oh, I, option two was twelve hundred for the masters.
Correct.
So option three is fifteen hundred.
Yes, fifteen hundred.
Okay, there you go, Gilbert, I didn't understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay, that's the three things, and we'll be explaining that a little bit in depth with, uh, start out with Mr. Elizondo, if you would please, again, and...
No, no, Gilbert has a question.
Yeah, it's a total dollar amount on, you know, I mean, although with the stipend, stipend, everything.
Well, the stipends are not changing, so there's no change there. What Dr. Mackey recommended is two point two million dollars, two million two hundred and thirty-six, zero twenty-four.
And then?
Two million, two thirty-six, zero twenty-four.
How many shows, like, on this one, the total estimate increase for the, on option one is one point seven million?
Well, we're not doing option...
I'll swing those.
I'm sorry. I mean, the numbers that I just gave you is the total of option three, which is one million nine forty-four, eight seventy-five, plus the increases that Dr. Mackey talked about, the first round increases, which is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
What happened to option one?
It's, it's embedded.
It's all in there.
In me...
Is this, is this in the one, three?
In three.
One, three.
It's embedded in there. The only difference is, is now, shall we just go ahead and talk about...
Mr. Flores.
Okay.
I'm just giving a brief overview. They're getting rid of it, they're gonna, we're gonna break it down and explain it.
Okay, we're gonna be here long, but we thought we was through.
Huh? Really included, really included, that's the meat of it. It is true.
It is true.
But for the short bus, we're gonna go over it again.
Okay, all right.
Mr. LaFoy, and then Mr. Salinas.
You're offering two percent for the bus drivers and three percent for the monitor?
No, no, hold on, Mr. LaFoy.
Haven't gotten there.
No, we're not there yet. We're not, we, we're talking about for the midpoint. The midpoint for the people that are below ninety percent are not in, are not on the pay range. This is a Tasby's recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we're gonna start out with Mr. Elizondo.
Okay. I'm gonna back up, and I'm gonna go through the very first document, just labeled page three.
Page three, yes, sir.
Which is what we were gonna cover, what, four weeks ago, at the first meeting?
Yes, sir.
And what this kinda shows you is a sheet that you see every year, it's a very summarized, uh, financials of what the budget looks like for this year, and what it's gonna look like for next school year. If you look at the thirteen fourteen column budget, you'll see that it's, right now, the same as the budget for two thousand twelve, thirteen, pretty much. Um, I did make a couple little changes here and there for state revenue. These, these dollars here are gonna change a little bit, and we're gonna go through and plug all those numbers in, but our tax rate is gonna stay the same, a dollar four, for them, and we're not gonna change the tax rate. Uh, those, that fifty-nine million dollars is gonna change a little bit, once we get the numbers from the appraisal district. Uh, you're looking, and, but it's not gonna be a drastic change, you're probably looking at maybe increasing at a million dollars. But what happens is when you increase the local revenue, you decrease state revenue, um, by, by almost dollar for dollar, 'cause that's the way, that's the way it works. And so, the only thing is that, um, as y'all have been watching the, uh, the, what's going on with the legislature, they've been putting out all kinds of proposals. The House has put up some proposals, up to two point five million dollars, uh, billion dollars. The Senate has done one point four, one point five billion dollars. The, uh, meeting they had on Tuesday, they voted out of committee that they were gonna do one point, uh, four billion to one point five billion dollars in new funding for schools for next year, for the next biennium. In addition to that, they were gonna do another eight hundred million dollars out of the rainy day fund, so they were saying two point two billion dollars. But the problem with the rainy day fund one is that we won't know that until November, because that money that they're trying to spend out of the rainy day fund has to go to the voters for approval, and that won't happen until November. So the voters have to approve that. And the total is like, they're trying to take like five point seven billion dollars out of the rainy fund, and that'll leave it a balance of about six point one billion dollars for the state. And now they're gonna divide it between transportation, uh, water, water projects that they have and what have you.
Right, right.
And education's gonna get eight hundred million. Three hundred million for merit, like award, like we used to have, remember like the date grant we used to have to, it's gonna be like for those kinda programs? And then the five hundred million dollars is gonna be redistributed to all the school districts, and they've talked a couple different ways. They said, once, we're gonna do it by WADA, weighted ADA, and if they do that, I kinda told Dr. Mackey today, if they were to approve that, and they did it by the weighted ADA, we would gain about two million dollars, um, out of that, if they were to do it that way. But then, uh, the other day I heard something, that they're kinda looking at that again and saying, well, no, they're gonna redistribute it a little bit differently than that. So, at this point, we're not sure. We're just kinda following what they're saying, but it's really hard to, to come up with anything at this point. So, when I move a little bit further down this page to talk about the state revenue, you see that I added a little bit there, I put like one point seven million dollars, just, at the time we did this, that's when they're talking about maybe having one point four billion dollars, and that's where they were at, that was, the Senate was the only ones that had really done anything. And so, I went through and I kinda just estimated, okay, how much is that gonna be for our school district approximately? And we've had numbers that range from the one point seven up to maybe six, six, up to maybe six million dollars. It just depends on how they're gonna fund the school districts, and how much they end up deciding on, 'cause, like I said, they keep throwing different numbers around, the one point, and there's a big difference between one point four to two point five. And so, once they decide, then we'll, of course, be able to do our numbers and, and figure it out. But, as y'all know, the legislative session doesn't adjourn until May twenty-seventh. And so, we're not gonna really know, and hopefully they'll make a decision by then, as to how much money they're gonna add to the, to school funding. And then, once they do that, then there's still gonna be a little time for interpreting exactly how it's gonna work through the formulas, and all that stuff, but at least, once they tell us, if the magic number's two billion dollars, then we'll have a real good idea as to how much we're gonna get, get from that two billion dollars. Um, so that's kinda where we're at right now, just to kinda give you an update, that we're, we're monitoring all that, we're working with the Equity Center, uh, and, and kinda looking to see what they're thinking we're gonna get, and, uh, just to kinda bounce it off against the things that we're thinking we're gonna receive, to make sure we're kinda in the same ballpark. Yes, sir.
Uh, the raises that you're recommending has nothing to do with what we might get from the state, is that correct?
Well...
It's, it's, it's gonna be basically part of the budget.
What happens is to determine how much we can spend in the entire district, whether it's for raises or anything else, we look at how much total money we're gonna bring in. So, which includes all the state money, and all the local money. Now, what it's not going to include, that five hundred million dollars that I told you, that has to go to November for the voter support.
Yes, yes.
We're not putting that in here at all, because we don't know how that, that may be okay, that may not be okay, and we're not gonna count that money.
I don't wanna say we're gonna give a reason, that, oh, we, by, by the way, we don't have the money.
No, 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 absolutely not. We're only going with what we know.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, tell me, um, based on what you said so far, how is the possibility of the dissolving of the lottery commission work with that?
Well, I mean, they've talked about that, and, and, uh, redirecting those funds somewhere else, instead of the education.
Right.
I'm not really sure. I, I don't know, I mean, I think what's...
Is it claimed that part of those funds we have been receiving?
Right.
So, is that part of the money that we're counting?
No. And what happens is, what we count is how much money we're gonna get, how much money they're gonna appropriate to, uh, education funding, K-12. So it doesn't really matter where they get it from, I'm not looking at, are they getting it from lottery money, are they getting it from sales tax? It doesn't matter.
'Cause we're gonna get the same amount no matter where they get it.
Right, exactly. All we're looking at is how much money are they dedicating to education funding for the next biennium, and that's what number we're looking at, not, not what source they're coming, they're getting it from. 'Cause once they've made the commitment that they're gonna spend, for instance, you know, eighty billion dollars on education, then it's eighty billion dollars, and they're gonna have to figure out where it's coming from.
Okay. Mr. Salinas.
What that was, that was a mistake, that, they were, they were voting on a sunset.
What's a sunset?
Every ten years, every agency in Texas is looked at by what's called the Sunset Commission to see if it's still needed.
Oh, oh.
It was, this year's session was the Sunset Commission to look at the lottery. Well, Watt went to the floor, people really didn't understand what they were voting on. But they did vote to eliminate the Lottery Commission in the morning, and then at lunchtime, members said, what'd y'all do? And they came back and revoted on it, so it doesn't go away.
They did do a revote, I thought they were planning on, but I didn't see it.
No, they did.
They did, okay, so that's...
The re-voting, the re-voting, I mean.
Yeah, because they realized that what they did, the wording of it, eliminated the Lottery Commission.
Hmm, good explanation, thank you, sir. Okay, Jose, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you're fine. And so, if you will go to the next page, where it talks about mostly the expenditures, you'll see that I did put a little bit of money in there, in the, where it talks about the salaries and new staff, and salary increases and things like that, just kind of on some projections as to what we were initially discussing, as to how much we were gonna look at potentially in raises and things like that. And if you look at that number, uh, you'll see that, um, that you, you see a, like, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the salaries and benefits, and that really is what, what we're doing there, is we're taking, if you look at the two thousand twelve, thirteen year, you'll see we had seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars there for new staff and what have you. Well, that carries over to the next year, so it's just really added to that top number, and that's why you see that, that's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus right there.
What was that, Jose, I'm sorry?
You see where it says...
Oh, salaries and benefits?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see it, I see it.
Okay. And so, we're really just moving into the next year, saying, okay, these are now fixed costs, that we, we hired some people, and we're gonna keep them on for the next year, so we're just moving that across. Where you're really seeing the difference is where it says salary increase in adjustments, three point five million dollars. That's the number that I put in there tentatively, until we decide what all's gonna happen, because, as Dr. Mackey mentioned, these two items that we're looking at here were increases for teachers, nurses, library, everybody on the teacher scale, teachers, nurses, librarians, and some counselors, and then the first round of increases. Um, what's not in here is, are increases for, for everybody else, and that, we won't know until we know how much money we're gonna get from the state.
June, before I make a recommendation on that.
Right.
The final one being June.
And we don't have to vote until, until, but we got time to work, we got, okay, sir.
Right. And so, that's where the difference is between the three point five million dollars that I put in there versus the two point two million we were talking about a minute ago for those two items. Um, as, so if you keep looking down at the budget, you'll see that, the, at the bottom there, where you see that, uh, two million, one ninety-five in brackets, saying that, right now, based on what we put in here, that the expenditures are gonna exceed revenues by two million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Again, this is just a very preliminary, very rough draft, just to get started. Um, we know that we're not gonna, we're not going to propose a budget like that, uh, it's just gonna give you an idea as to where we're, kinda where we're starting, a, a starting off point. Any, any questions about that?
Any questions? No, sir.
Okay.
Fund balance.
Oh, I'm sorry. The fund balance, if we were to adopt this budget as is presented right here, which we're not proposing, we would end up with a fund balance of about twenty-nine million dollars, which, our number that we always try to target is around twenty, twenty-six to twenty-seven million dollars, so we still would be above the number that we need to be. But, I'm thinking, the number that we're gonna end up with is gonna be one twenty-nine million dollars. Yes, ma'am?
Based on the increase, um, in employees over the year, then that would tell me that our monthly rate has went up?
Right.
So, what is our monthly rate now?
We're almost up to eleven million dollars...
Per month?
Per month. And what our policy says is that we have to keep, um...
Two and a half?
It's quite, it's about two and a half, it's, I'm trying to think of the percentage off the top of my head, but, uh, I think it's like, neither nor, if you took a twelve or seventeen percent, something like that, of the expenditures for the year, then it's around that twenty-seven million dollar range. So, sorry, go ahead, sir. So if you will turn to, to the next page, page...
I have a some, I have a some...
Oh, yes, sir.
...fund out.
Sure.
We had a thirty-six million at some point, one point?
Yes, sir.
And so, the optimal raise was actually playing on to add a little more than...
About twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
It's optimal base. We're seventy, we're...
So we were... Right. And like this, this current year, when the board decided to, um, authorize a retention incentive, that was about three and a half million dollars, that's why we felt like, okay, we can do it, because we were at, you know, we had this finished fund balance to absorb that and, and be okay.
We, I think, we've had actually a reduction in force to some degree, that we've had to eliminate positions, and in doing so, that would, of course, change the monthly amount for payroll. Have we seen a big difference on the study last year, in terms of what that payroll fee was?
The major reduction that we did in staff wasn't during the current fiscal year, or the current, right, it was the prior fiscal year, that was official, we had all the cuts. And in that year, yes, we did see, uh, a large decrease in both the revenue, 'cause we expect, you know, the state told us they were gonna give us less money, so we saw that decrease, and we also saw a large decrease in expenditures for salaries, because we did release positions in, or not hired, not filled positions, and so we did see that. And some of that, during this fiscal year that we're in right now, the board came back and said, okay, well, let's add some of these positions back with our recommendation, of course, and, like, for instance, when we said we need the computer, like, the computer aids to come back, and so, those kinda things that the board approved during this budget for this year, we've seen those expenditures kinda come back a little bit, but they were not anything compared to the amount that we reduced. And we had a little bit of an increase coming back, but we reduced quite a bit that first year when we were told, we were told that we were gonna use about nine million dollars.
Okay, this, we can understand.
Sure.
Two years ago, we had a payroll of like, I'm gonna say thirteen million was our payroll.
Sure.
It's, it's eleven million now.
Sure.
So, based on what our fund balance held, I didn't say thirteen million...
Right.
We had enough to cover, it was, obviously it would've been more than twenty-six million, if it's a thirteen, you know, you don't wanna talk about that.
Right, right, yes.
So, when we had a reduction in force, it went down, so the percentage needed in that fund balance sort of went down.
Sure.
Make sure I'll think of...
No, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
And what we typically do is we take the total expenditures that we budgeted, budgeted for the general operating fund, and let's say it's a hundred and fifty million dollars, for example, and we apply a percentage to that, and say, I'm sorry, I can't, it's either twelve or seventeen percent, and we apply to that number, and say that's the magic number that we have to, uh, go, go, that we have to maintain. We can't go, have a fund balance below that, because the board approved a resolution, uh, three or four years ago, that said, that told us that, we cannot go below this number in our fund balance. And it's based, it's not a hard number, it's based on a percentage of expenditures for that year.
So, maybe, maybe it's a manageable, we're closed every year with what it was, rather than have to go back to the end of the year?
Right.
Well, what is the projected growth of our fund balance?
Well...
Potential...
Well, based on the budget that's being presented here, which is, like I told them, it's just a very preliminary, very rough draft budget, um, it was looking like our fund balance was going to actually, if we did it like this, it was gonna decrease, 'cause we were budgeting thirty-one million dollars to start this year, and then we're looking at ending next school year, not beginning, but ending it with twenty-nine million dollars, so decreasing it by about two million dollars. Uh, but, of course, like I said, this is just a draft, and we're not proposing this. Uh, we would, we would typically always propose a balanced budget, and so, which would mean that if we started off with thirty-one million, we would recommend a budget that would end at thirty-one million dollars. The only reason, like this past year, this current year that we're in right now, that we would see a decrease is because we recommended a balanced budget, and then we all talked about doing the retention incentive, and we all talked about, okay, if we do this, that means it's gonna lower our fund balance by three and a half million dollars, are we okay with that? And everybody said, yes, you know, we're okay with that, so then we gave the incentive, therefore lowering our fund balance by three and a half million dollars.
What's our usual increase period?
In fund balance? It, it, uh, it varies, but Ms. Derr is correct, it does go in, it increases between one and a half, two million, it just depends. I mean, we had some where we've only increased three hundred thousand dollars. It's been a long time since we've had a decrease. We've always been building a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, but, uh, I know last year, the year before, we increased it by about two, two and a half million dollars, but it was in one shot.
I'm sorry, sir.
Our big software is gonna be included in this raise? I don't see a margin.
No, not the first round. That's, that's the recommendation, whatever we recommend...
Tasby.
In, uh, in June.
In June.
In June. This, this raise is only the ones that Tasby's recommended, that are below the midpoint range.
But they're going to get a raise?
Okay, I can't say that until we go through the budget process in June.
So, we got it.
This is...
When do we have to sign the budget?
In the last week of June. June, last week of June.
Well, right now, I, I could stand behind you.
We're not there yet, Richard.
No, I know, I know.
This is to get people to midpoint.
Right.
Officers are already above midpoint. This is to get them to midpoint.
And, and let me, and let me, and let me explain that real quick. So make, make sure, and we're going to cover that, Ms. Howard's going to cover that, we're going to go down in just a minute, but since the question's being asked right now. The, what Tasby did is they went through and they looked at all, at our employees, the different positions, and I keep saying employees, but different positions throughout the district. And they started looking at those positions as to what we were paying them and looking at what our competition was paying them. To kind of establish a market. Where should these people be a benchmark as to where they should be? Then once they established, excuse me, a benchmark and said, for instance, this person should be at fifty thousand dollars, but they're only getting paid forty thousand dollars. And they would say, okay, well, they're, for example, only at eighty percent of the benchmark. Telling us, hey, you're underpaying this position because it really, you're only at eighty percent of where it should be. So you need to, you know, bump it up. And what Ms. Howard has done through those recommendations with Dr. Mackey's directive is saying, take all those people that are below the ninety percentile of the market and put them up to the ninety percentile. To make sure we're at least within ninety percentile of what the market. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that they're at midpoint, above or below, it just means that they're within ninety percent of what the market.
The fair market value.
Fair market value.
Do they, who do they compare our place to find the truth? The local place you find that's around here?
No.
Other school districts.
Other school districts.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Alcindor, when we extended the maintenance personnel, I called it stabilization, it's probably on the right note.
The fourteen positions?
Yes. So, um, you've calculated that ending into this budget, right? Okay. Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Salya, help me. There's a bill floating somewhere where the public, um, will be made aware of the total debt that municipalities, et cetera, et cetera owe. Remember that? I'd kind of like to know.
There's something.
Thank parents, oh, Susan Combs is doing it.
Right, it's her, it's her report, she already issued the report. And it shows all the different debt that all the municipalities in Texas have, including from the state, all the way down to the, to the smallest municipal, you know, mud, that they call it utility district. As to how much debt everybody has, so that everybody understands how much debt the state has, you know, all the state and all its components throughout. And she's issued that report, I want to say it was issued three, maybe three months ago, maybe, or something like that. And so now the legislature's looking at that.
Okay, I heard it last week, talk about it. So do you have that same information available for Justin? Could you get that for the board?
Sure, and, and yes, I do have it. And every time we do an official statement, just for you to know, every time we do an official statement, like for selling new bonds or refunding bonds, we have to always put that in there. How much is our debt? How much is it per, per capita? In other words, per, uh, person that lives in the district? How much is it per student? So that people who buy our bonds know how much debt is the school district. And then there's also another page that's called overlapping debt. So it doesn't only show JUDs and it shows any other municipality that's within JUDs, in Converse, Kirby, Livo. So that the investors know, not only, because it's the same taxpayers, it's the same tax base, so that they know how much are they being taxed to pay off their debt for any one of the different taxing entities within, that encompass the JUDs and for the schools.
What I really love to see is where are we on our school budget, um, process that we've been doing, you know, we've got the small loans. And then now we just did this one note. So I'd like to see kind of where we, we stand on our debt and on that.
Sure.
Um, and then this report right here, this, these numbers that you gave, giving us, this is with the amendments? This is the final number where we are with all the amendments that the board has already approved?
As of, as the board has already approved, yes. And there'll be more coming, but as of this time, we're ready, yes.
Sure, as of now, we've already approved.
That's correct.
This is the number, so this is not the number that was the budget that we approved back in June. This is as we've amended through the quarter.
They're, they're only, right, and most, most of it is, there's only like two changes in here and it's in the expenditure section.
Okay.
So, yes. But I always add another column in here that says amended budget. And then you'll see the changes come when I start doing that.
Okay.
For the changes that are going to be coming, because these, the ones that we've been doing really are, have been really small. The big ones come right now, towards the end of the year. And it's really, we'll start adjusting both revenue and expense, it kind of will, will wrap.
If you remember, you said your last year of this nine, seven, nine, Dr. Mackey brought a balanced budget to us?
Last year?
Last year at this time? When you bring a balanced budget to us?
We did, and the reason we were able to do that, what, there's a, when the legislature meets, it's a two-year budget. So the first year, which is this year they meet, it's always very hard to determine how we're going to fund because they're, they're trying, they don't know how much money they're going to give us. The second year of the cycle, we already know, we can determine it really easily because they've already told us the year before, how much money they're going to give us and how they're going to fund us. So the second year of each biennium, it's very simple for, or a lot easier for us to go through and calculate how much money we're going to receive. So we can bring to you a more complete budget a lot earlier than we can right now. Uh, because we're still, there's still a lot of unknowns until they tell us, then, then we can give you some better numbers.
Well, are they getting the last one?
No. Based on, oh, I shouldn't say that. Based on what we hear, what we're hearing from, you know, the, all the different entities that report on what the legislature's doing. They're all, the House and the Senate are both recommending increases in funds. So we will see, based on what they're saying, we will see an increase in funds.
But the spread between House and Senate is about a billion dollars plus ready day fund later, which we got voted on in November. So there's a lot of.
Right, that's what I said a little while ago, the range is from one point seven to six million dollars.
Last year, I had a problem with those five APs that we give to middle schools. Are they employed by the legislature?
Yes, they are, as of right now, they are, yes, sir.
When is there the contract for after the school?
We'll take action in May, sir. May.
Just next month, next regular meeting.
There's really nothing we can do about it, is there?
That has yet to be decided. There is still time if there wasn't that decision, but at this time, we're not recommending that.
Will it be at the May or the beginning of May?
It'll be at the board meeting in May. In the board meeting at May.
The board meeting at May. I would like to put on to the agenda to pull the five boards, five APs to the middle schools.
To pull that contract.
But, uh, there's really two on there that could deserve three APs. And that would be, uh, Kitty Hawk, which has thirteen hundred and sixteen. And the other one would be, let's see, uh, Judson Middle School, which has one thousand twenty. The other ones are way under capacity even. They're, they're good for two, but not three.
Can I keep going real quick, David? Okay. I'm going to go real quick to the next page. The next one is just a chart that just shows you, if you want to see in, in kind of more of a chart form, just to remind you, how much of our expenditures is encompassed in salary and benefits. And it's about seventy-nine percent of our budget. Uh, it ranges from seventy-nine to eighty percent, somewhere in that range. So this, for this current year, it was seventy-nine percent. And I'm focusing a lot on salaries because that's what we're really talking mostly about tonight. If you'll turn the next page, to the next page, it's a, on your, on your book?
Oh, yes.
It is a his, history, a breakdown of what we spend on salary and expenditures for our school district. And it's broken down by a number of different categories. And also, it's there for, I think, nine, nine years, I think. And, of course, the twelve, thirteen year is budget, that's current year. And then all the rest of them are actual numbers that we've actually spent every year on each one of these items. Excuse me. To give you an idea, in, uh, for this year, our budget is, uh, was a hundred and thirty million dollars. If you look at the very bottom of that, for the column, for the two thousand twelve, thirteen school year, for salaries and benefits for the general operating fund. And if you look at last year, it was a hundred and twenty-three million dollars, uh, for what we actually paid for salaries and benefits for employees. So it just kind of, it kind of gives an idea, and if you had it, if you wanted, if you had any questions, uh, you can look at this and, and see. You'll see that the biggest amount of money is spent, spent on salaries for professionals, the six one one nine account. And that's where all the teachers are, in that particular code. And then the next biggest one is where it says wager, wages for auxiliary, sixty one twenty-nine. And that is where we pay all of our custodians, transportation employees, maintenance employees, all the secretaries have, all that other ones go, that's where the salaries come out of there. And it has a little description, kind of next to it, so you kind of have an idea.
You do with that page?
I am do with that page.
I'm like, Dr. Mackey, you're first, go ahead, please, somebody down there first. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm back here on six one one two.
Yes, sir.
Six one one two. We didn't give a pay raise last year, so I assume that's an increase in expenditures and substitute teacher?
That's what we budgeted, yes, sir. We don't, I mean, we don't know exactly what the final number's going to be yet, right? But that's what we budgeted for substitutes, just to make sure we had sufficient money in there to pay for subs.
I guess, Ms. Howard, do we have that number so far this year, where we're at?
I do, I mean, I don't have it with me, but I can definitely, I can definitely.
We can pull it.
It's in, it's in our computers, it's mine.
Bring that next budget, okay?
Here to date for subs.
That's actual budgeted, but I want to know where we're at. Thank you.
I think you gave the report.
Did you just say we were under?
I'm sorry? Under what? Under what, I'm sorry?
No, he did that.
I just didn't hear what I said, whether we know that or we're.
She thought you said we were under, but I know we're not.
Oh, no, no, no.
We will set no expectations.
You know, Mrs. Salya, one of the, we keep talking about the substitutes every year, but, um, thinking back to what the H R audit review lady said about processes. You know, I'd be interested to know, what is our policy concerning substitutes? When do they get them? How do they get them? Who gets them?
Well, I can't, I, I think that, I'm going to speak for some folks over here, but I think that one of the solutions, the automation, right?
Well, we have that.
We'll get a very, we have.
We do have that.
Well, I guess, I guess, I won't put you, what's, what's, I mean, you know, I cringe at one point five million dollars for substitutes. Is the, is the problem still, we have a three-day weekend and people take the Friday and the Monday?
The policies are in place. There, the policies that we have regarding the use of leave are effective and appropriate. We recently went through the Tasby, uh, policy review. Our leave policies are appropriate. Currently, what we've done, um, a year ago, the administration withdrew, I believe, fifty percent of the business leave days that were being utilized at the campus level. We're still seeing a lot of teachers, um, I'm, I'm not just going to say teachers, but staff in general, who believe because they're given five days, they will use all five. Yeah, so they're using their five state, they're using their five local. Um, and there's a very few, because there's no, they don't feel it. Um, some districts have recommendations or actually have policy in place that teachers have to pay a certain portion for their substitute. Um, that tends to drive down the usage rates. Some of the other things that we've done is we have implemented monthly reporting of substitute uses by campus, by, um, leave type. So principals are aware of why their people are calling in and policing that a little better, but.
I know, I know, I don't know for a fact, but my guess is that other districts have tried the characteristic, like, if you don't take any of these days, we give you five hundred dollars at the end of the year, or something like that. I mean.
We, we did.
I know we wanted to dance the character here.
We did, we did offer incentive for attendance, um, and unfortunately, um, we created a pool, or a pot of monies. And the more people that qualified, then the less your, your individual piece was.
I remember that.
Well, then we actually ended up having people grieve over our gratitude towards them. So it just, it really backfired on us and it didn't work well.
And you know, and Tasby publishes, and I'm sorry, uh, well, because it talks about leaves and absences, because this is not a Judson, yeah, this is, this is everywhere. And if you just look at the number of teachers we have, that we give them ten days to use at their discretion, and this is just teachers, not including all the staff, just teachers. If every teacher used their ten days and we paid a substitute to come in, you're talking about one point one million dollars a year, just for, just for that group of employees, uh, to, to pay for the substitutes.
One point one million if they just use what we give them.
Yep, they're ten days, if every teacher in the district would use every, the ten days that we give them, um, and we hired substitute for each one of those teachers, it would be one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, a, a, and so what happens typically, what we've seen when we do the incentives for, um, trying to encourage teachers or anybody else, employees, not to use their sick days. What ends up happening is that we end up, which is not, this is not necessarily a bad thing, but what ends up happening is we end up rewarding the people that are at work all the time anyway. Because they're still the ones that are going to show up. And the people who are always absent are always going to be absent anyway, because the five hundred dollars or whatever, it's not sufficient as incentive to get them to work.
They're going to take the days no matter what we do.
Right.
Dr. Mackey, I, I brought to you one time when I went to a conference and what this one school district was doing, and it wasn't in Texas. They had their administrators taking four substitute days, all the administrators, taking four substitute days a year. And, and it worked out, you know, they saved some money, not, not a whole lot of money, but they did save some money, uh, was one. Two, they got, the teachers saw these administrators in the classroom so they could see exactly what's going on, you know, in the classroom, because, you know, let's face it, you know, it's been a while since you've been in the classroom. You know, administrator, you know, and three.
I do teach.
Not in Judson.
Non-Judson.
Not in Judson.
And three, it makes sure that the teachers have their substitute folders or substitute, uh, things in line, the way they're supposed to be. You know, and, and it's, uh, you know, and I believe this district was in Arizona or something, Phoenix, but that's what they were doing. And, uh, you know, it, you know, you know what I'm saying? I, I always thought that might, I don't know how that would work here, you know, but.
It, it's a good idea, uh, to do that. I've done it before. Uh, however, this is what I mean by not here in Judson. We've cut administrative staff in this building so much, you look at the Tasby report, it's cut so much. When you start taking administrators and putting them in the classroom, what do you think's going to start happening?
You're talking about, you're talking about administrators at the campus, you're not talking.
No, no, I'm probably, they, they use all the administrators. Like Dr. Mackey went over to Judson High School and, and, uh, stayed there, what, three days, four days last year?
Three weeks.
Three weeks, okay. Three weeks over there. Hell, but, but you see, you know, and what happened? And what happened over there?
I don't know, who told me?
Well, I mean. I believe, when you were there, you know, it was going right. And then when you weren't there, it kind of slacked off back, you know.
And they kept away the mouse.
Well, but it, it, they don't know exactly when you're going to be there, you know? And, and I'm not saying, okay, every week you have to take one. I'm saying four days a year, or three days a year, let's start it with three days a year, that they, uh, you know, because sometimes we have these jobs that don't get picked up. And then you take these kids in the fifth grade here at, uh, at Pashal, you know, and you, you know, the teacher doesn't show up, nobody picks up the job. They got to put half of the kids over to this, that fifth grade class and half of the kids over here. You're disrupting the kids that are there, in that class, and the kids that are coming over. And then, let's say you pick up somebody by noon, they come back and they put them all together. You know, I, I mean, it's just real disrupt, and it's just for those times when they don't pick up jobs, because you know it happens, you know, in all the campuses.
I think a board member should stop.
Hey? Yeah, they have to pay you. All the retired board members should do that, you're right.
I got full-time jobs.
At least fill a foil.
Yeah, I have a question. Would it be a lot of work for you to get together and show us what school is using what amount of substitute?
I produce that report monthly already.
Wouldn't be a lot of problem.
Do you like, would you like this report?
I would like that, yes.
I get, here, here's our quagmire, I think. We give people ten days to use and they use them, they're mad about them. I mean, that's it, I'm mad about the one point five million dollars. But we give it to them, they have the right to use it, but yet it's a, you know, one point one, one point five million. I don't know. I have the answer.
I mean, well, some of the answers are, but, you know, you don't want to, you talk about creating some morale issues, is you say, okay, well, you know what? You can have the state five days, but we're going to take all the district ones away, we're not giving you, you only get five. Or you can have all ten, but every time you're out, we're going to charge you for the substitute, so you're going to pay for your own substitute income. But, so those, those are definitely cut down on the expenses, but you're going to have another issue when you do things like that.
Same as one.
A lot of times they use substitutes when they're going to.
Somerset is the only one.
No, we, we reduced the allowances of those by over fifty percent. So.
What are you talking about?
We're not asking about cases that do a lot of substitutes.
Yes, we do.
We cut business leave because I personally approve every single teacher that's gone. Takes me hours every day. And Ms. Barrett does secondly. So if you imagine, they all have to come through me, um, if it's a business leave, and we've reduced because not all of them get approved. If it's a business leave.
What's a business leave?
They're going to workshop, they're going to, the principal wants to pull five to plan with data for the day. Yes, exactly. We should call it admin, but admin now is, um, if Dr. Mackey sends someone home.
Is that included in one point five minutes?
So now the others is business.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, Mrs. Salya, I agree with you about the one point one, or one point one two five, whatever. My, um, they don't, they don't get anything for not taking the leave. They can't sell it anymore. They did it with that, right?
What, what they, what they are.
People leave and stop budgeting.
What they're able to do is we use it more of a, of a reward for people who stay with us for a while. So if you're with us for ten years and then you're going to go some, well, first of all, let me back up. If it's state leave and you transfer to another school district, you take that state leave with you. Okay, that is, you don't lose that, that transfers to another district. So if they, then you, they can take it away. Now, if they stay with us, with the school district for ten years, then when they leave our school district, if they're just going to move to another school district or what have you, um, or just quit, then they will get paid for the, they'll get paid for their local days. Now, if they're going to retire from our district and they've had at least ten, uh, ten years, they'll get paid for both their state and local days. So we kind of give them that incentive, say, well, if you're a long time employee, at least ten years, and you save up those days, you're banking them, you're going to get some money when you get to move on or quit or try.
And if you have fifty state days, you can trade them to the state with some money and buy an extra year of retirement.
And they all understand this.
Oh, yeah, it's in policy.
So, my, two questions on the substitute. How many, when we look at this, all we see is, you know, one point five. But how much of this money is long-term subs that we hired, using, who we hired?
Um, really, you're not going to see the majority of your expense coming from this long-term stuff. That's not the issue.
But are they included in this? So there's, there's really a lot of variables in there where we really can't identify and say, this is just teachers, um, they've gone. Because then also the substitute in here, are they also the people that you put on administrative leave? If they're principals or whatever?
Now, let me tell, let me, I'm going to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me tell you what we're doing right now. You know how we, we had visited a while back telling you all that we're going to, we're automating during program review? We're automating the sick leave, the, the pink sheet, so we're getting rid of that. So everybody's starting to use the substitute calling system next year. Well, in there, we have just finished, uh, the meetings for creating all the reasons as to when we hire a substitute. And all those things you're talking about, they're broken down now. So when a sub is out for jury duty, when a, I mean, when a teacher's out, employees are out for jury duty, when they're out for professional development, and we have it broken down, like if it's being paid by Title I, if it's being paid by all different things. So after, right, once we start implementing that, then, um, after we get everybody used to recording it properly, then all that will be broken down, so then we can tell you. We have so many long-term subs, well, actually, long-term subs is not one of the categories, if we needed that, we need to track that. But it'll tell you how many of them are for family illness, for employee illness, for, uh, for, just any kind of, all, I mean, we have, there's like twenty-six, twenty-seven different reasons that we can give you ideas on. The admin leave that you are talking about, that's a separate reason.
And currently, the, um, reports that I am providing to the administrators also tell them exactly you've had this many absences or substitutes filled assignments for, um, bereavement leave. You had this many for jury duty, you had this many for per, uh, employee illness, family illness.
And we're taking those and we're just.
I think I'll have Dr. Mackey, um, as he racks his frame and tries to figure out, um, you know, where are there some food given? But, um, so it is a possibility. I love subbing out of stuff, and Salya, for four years, and we need to get the sub to pay raise this year.
I think we broke up the administrative, uh, not the administrative, the long-term, so, you know, to see what's.
Long-term subs continuity.
Yeah, no, but I mean, we know they're going to be there and they're there because, you know, a person.
He didn't mean not having.
No, I'm not saying not having, I'm saying break it out as far as in the report, you know, from what the other substitute.
Teacher absence, or employee absence, if a person, no one is in that position.
I think we can beat this worth a lot, but we give them ten days, they're allowed to take ten days. We know it costs money. My burn is the figure, and my burn is, on a three-day weekend, I guarantee, I don't have to look, I know, if Ms. Howard's going to shake her head, yes. Them three-day weekends turn to four-day weekends, I bet if we plotted on a graph, that's the number one. That's the number one.
They, they cannot take off the day before a holiday, it has to be approved.
Approved.
Okay, it's not just, oh, I'm going to take off, it's, so I can have a three-day. That has to be approved.
They call it sick.
Right, that they can.
They're not taking, they're calling it sick.
Well, yes.
Now, I guarantee you, Memorial Day's coming up, right? Memorial Day's on a Monday, right? I want you to look, if you could graph it on a graph, Friday's going to be a spike, like you can't believe.
Oh, look at the day though. How many have you think you had today? Tomorrow's a holiday.
I, I, that's my burn, I mean, I mean, people deserve, if we give it to them, they have a right to take it. But take it if you get an extra day on a four-day weekend, I don't know.
I shouldn't say anything, I did that in military.
So, so what did you say the number was, uh, for the ten-day?
Only for teachers, I'm not including everybody, just for that group, is one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That, is that what you budget?
No, we don't budget, we don't, we don't budget the max. We take a trend on, on average of all these from here and then say, okay, that's what we're going to budget next year.
I think if you budget, be conservative, budget the whole thing, and say, hey, we're saving this much money.
I'll just have to ask you for more budget money when I do the budget.
Hey, Jose.
Okay.
Mr. Masia.
Um, child nutrition, those funds come out from both different pockets. I know that we're actually trying to explain this based on using child nutrition funds, and that we do take from our staff. So that would show up on, on this information at all?
No, when we, as we get a look to the next meeting, there will be another section, especially for child nutrition, and one for debt service, where we do the bonds, because you all are required to approve budgets for all those three, the general operating fund, child nutrition and bonds. So when we do the next one, it'll show you more of a breakdown on child nutrition revenues and expenditures for child nutrition. Now, the items that Ms. Howard's going to cover in a minute, it does include raises for the child nutrition staff, or adjustments in there for those staff, she'll cover that a little bit.
And, and that's a little, if someone needs that benefit, is that, it hits the substitute budget?
Yes, yes.
If it's a position that, that requires substitute, yes.
We plan to force substitute.
Which, when you guys break it down, it will be interesting to see where the mass of the substitute dollars is going. If it's at the M L S, if it's just on the form stick, I mean, what's, what that looks like, because I'd love to better manage it.
I have something on that page, we're doing substitute, doing substitute.
Uh, yes. Jose.
On the next item, on the career ladder, our numbers are going down because we have retirees in that programs office, right?
That's it.
Okay, and then on the next line, pension duty and supplement, notice that huge increase. Um, can you explain that? Okay, and then on the next line, extra duty and supplements, notice that huge increase. Um, can you explain that from eleven point oh?
Which one?
What, what happens is that, again, now remember that these are budgets, they're not actual numbers, first of all. And the other thing is that it, it has to do with stipends. A lot of the stipends that we pay our employees, this is, this is the budget code that we used to do that. As well as when we're planning for tutorials, like after-school tutorials, um, and that's a lot of the money, like for, when we're using state comped, state chemistry monies, we, uh, are putting more money into those tutorials, so that's where, that is where that line goes into that budget right there.
That, that, thank you. That triggered my memories. And for Dr. Mackey, um, some of the paraprofessionals had told me this year that they were no longer allowed to tutor. That only the teachers were allowed to tutor, which would explain why our increase. Is that a law that passed?
It's due to the funding source.
It's the funding source. We got funding source.
It has to be a certified educator.
Which funding source is that?
Several of them require it. Title does.
So if it's due to the funding source, then it shouldn't cost us more money, right?
What was it?
Because it should come from whatever the.
If it's, if it's a title, for those tutorials, yes. But I'm talking about like state compensated story education, which is out of here, which.
So does that require a certified teacher as well?
I need to double check. I'm pretty sure they fall under highly qualified.
Okay, I'd really like to know that specifically.
But there's also another issue. Okay, my, my issue. That's, that's a separate, that's a program issue? My issue is that when you have an hourly employee who is working nexus of forty hours, they are subject to overtime rates. And so when they're, when, to do the tutorials, they need to track how many hours they're working, you know, physically at work. And once they exceed the forty, they gotta make sure that they're paying them at least, uh, overtime rate. And so I think that's one of the reasons that they have cut back on some of that as well. But it may be a lot, also from what they're saying, so.
And in order to really know, I mean, overtime for a paraprofessional still may not be as much as a teacher's made.
Well, teachers, it's a flat fee. Like they'll pay a teacher twenty-five dollars an hour period, that's all.
You're just gonna pay them twenty-five dollars.
That's all we pay. That's all we pay. Right. So there's no, I mean, it doesn't matter.
So please, please let me know because I failed to get an answer. I had several, and, you know, it's like, the parents feel like, um, they already paid less. And so we took away that, um, little extra income that they could be earning where they were doing tutoring. And then they felt like they were really helping the kids, you know.
Another, another thing that we have to look at too, Mr. Dare, is why we stick with certified teachers. And you have, you have a group of teachers that's held accountable. You wanna make sure that they, they get in the top people, that they're trained, uh, teach them that subject. And not just putting a sub, because you put a sub in there and they're not certified, then that, that student doesn't pass, then who's held liable? So that's why you, I always wanna put a certified teacher in there.
Okay, so then, um, that was all I had on the extra duty. You're going down, overtime doubled in one twenty-one. What is that attributable to?
Again, you know, as you can see, it doubled in.
That's the next one.
Well, they're, they're both, they're, they're both of those lines. There, there are two overtime lines there. One of them.
Adventure, adventure club went down.
Right. And, and, right, and just so y'all know, the reason that we broke that down to the, the part in Adventure Club, the one that has the AC, they pour for itself. So it's not like we're paying for that. We are, but it's through money the parents gives. The one right above it, again, we, it's just an average. If you look at the other years and we start kind of forecasting out, and in two thousand and ten, eleven, you saw where we spent five hundred and fifty-six. And the next year you saw when we went down to three oh seven, it's just a safety net. We're not gonna necessarily spend six hundred and forty-one thousand. But it's what we budgeted right now to make sure, we can give you a year-to-date to show you where we're at. But I can tell you the biggest problem that we're having, and y'all already know this, when we looked at this number, Dr. Mackey asked me the same question. He said, hey, well, where are we spending all this money? And it's custodians. Um, we're, we're so low on custodial staff, and they're working a lot of overtime hour, overtime time. And so that's where that is driving that cost. When we look to see where it was budgeted, it was on function, the majority of function fifty-one, which is our custodial staff across the board.
Not only custodian, we pay bus drivers that work for, in the summertime and doing holidays, for extra income. Are you approved them, just extra income?
Do you pay them overtime? Or you pay them, it should be overtime in summer.
Did we pay them in the?
In, in the, in the summertime, it's just regular time.
Regular time?
Yes, sir.
But what about, do we pay them over Christmas, Thanksgiving holidays and all of that?
Only if they're working over forty hours, otherwise.
If they're working over forty hours, you have to pay them.
Are these substitute, are these overtime, uh, sorry, uh, you say it's custodial, and that's keeping them at, uh, what's the ratio, twenty-two hundred, twenty-two?
Well, the problem is that we have a lot of vacancies. We have twenty-something vacancies. And so when that happens, and there's custodians that are having to work, you know, pulling double, doing more areas than they should, staying later into the night, uh, to clean those facilities.
Still, we don't have the people.
Cause they're not, right, they're not able to fill those positions.
I did find out something, you know, I went to Longview to use it to the substitute training, substitute training, the safety training and things, and things like that. And as I was driving the country from here, the Longview, every town I went to, either on the, on the school, on the fence, on a bus, it says, need what?
Custodians.
Bus driver. So I, so it's not just here.
It's not just us, yeah.
It's, it's throughout the entire state.
And there's some things that we're doing, and, and there's some things that we're doing, that, that HR is doing and with Dr. Mackey and coming to y'all, to try to make some differences in, in being able to hire, and y'all heard some of this the other day, about hiring, hiring some, um, more custodians, making it easier to hire some of those custodians. And also looking at what we're paying their starting salary to try to, uh, attract more, to get more of those positions filled, so we can lower that overtime. Because also, I mean, our, our folks that are doing overtime, I mean, they get tired, they can only do so much. And so we're trying to get those positions filled, this is what we're willing to do.
Yes, sir.
I can almost pinpoint that our problem started with custodians. Because when we increased the square footage for each custodian, they started going that way. And as far as bus drivers go, they're going where the money is, and I don't blame them. They're going down, driving front down there and there.
Eagle Ford show.
Yep. So, I think we oughta look into that, especially the custodians, because I don't remember having this little custodian before. I know we always were looking for custodians, but the schools had a bridge staff to work with.
I know a lot of school districts, they say, where the teachers are emptying the trash and, you know, just things like that comes back, you know, and, and I've heard a lot of them doing that, you know, and so.
And just to kind of say, you know, the, the thing with the custodians, I mean, the reason we started allocating more square footage for custodian is because that's what the market was doing. And when we were having people like, and I'll do some of the, I won't say any names, but any of these, uh, companies that do out, that you do outsourcing to, and then they were taking our figures and running it through their models, and we were getting the information back saying, hey, Johnson, you're being wasteful, and we can do a better job than y'all can. And we said, well, how, how is that possible? How can I do a better job than we can? And it had to do with exactly that. It was, it was a number of units, because they were assigning those larger square footage spaces to their employees. And we had the smaller's like more, so we had more employees, more cost. And so when those reports came out and they would come to the board or whatever, it looked like we were being wasteful. And so when we said, okay, well, let's look at what everybody else is doing, the other school districts and everything else, and we said, okay, that shows that we do need to increase our square footage, which unfortunately didn't have what you're talking about, uh, lower number of, of staff per facility.
What happens, I, I've seen substitute, is in some districts, when they do that, their custodials are not just assigned to that school, you know. And they'll bring them in, they have them at, at the custodial department, you know, and they go out from there.
And we have some of those floaters as well, that they'll go in and, and whenever somebody's out or something, they'll go help that particular school. It's just that we have a lot of vacancies right now, and that's what, that's what's hurting. And in the summertime, they do try to group them together and say, okay, you guys are going out as a team now. You're gonna go do all the buffing here, all the stripping here, and all of, yeah, so they all kind of hit the schools a little bit, you know.
That's mostly in the summertime, though.
In the summertime, yes, sir.
Right now, Park Village has two women on at night and one man during the day. Now, that man does everything. They need a light bulb changed, you judge that. They need to haul this, some kid has a mess in the hallway, he's gotta clean that. That poor man is running.
So, I mean, what we're hoping, well, and I don't know if they're full, full capacity now, do you know, if they may have a vacancy there, I'm not sure, Mr. LaFoix, what their square footage or how many units they should be assigned. But hopefully, like I said, with so many changes, we're hoping that we can attract some more folks, and some of that will be a little bit better for them.
One of the, one of the big problems too, in these manual label jobs, geographic too, you take a teacher, she'll drive across town in a four forty-five thousand dollar job. Custodian will not drive across town for this job. So our pool of applicants is cut just by the rate in the geographic area. And that's, that's a big factor.
When I'm on the bus. Um, one of the things, Dr. Mackey, um, I would ask in bus drivers, transportation, custodial and making, I know you had mentioned before that you were, um, looking at those departments. If over the summer, if you was evaluating, um, how the supervision, uh, of those areas are, in other words, in, in custodials, um, the principals, they still don't have control of their, of their budget, right?
Yes, um, if I may, sir. Um, at the beginning of this year, we actually gave each campus the option to whether they would want the district to manage those staff.
Or they, they managed the staff. So we. Only chose to do that.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number, but quite a few, yes.
Quite a few didn't take the supervisor's. So if, if the major, if quite a few of them took over, then we still need to go back and evaluate whether or not, um, we're gonna have campus leadership over the custodial staff or whether we're gonna go back to the district. If you recall, um, the previous director of operations switched to a centralized method when it used to be each campus managed their own and managed their funds. And I know the custodians were much happier when it was that way, because I had several of them contact me and ask us, please not go to a centralized, because they wanted to work for their campus and manage their equipment. Um, I've had complaints about broken equipment, et cetera, et cetera, and I'm not gonna get off on custodians, Mr. Savi, but, um, as Dr. Mackey said, overtime was attributable to that. I know, um, bus drivers, you know, we had those complaints about some bus drivers were getting overtime while other bus drivers didn't even get forty hours. And so, um, all those fall within your purview, Ms. Howard, of, um, ensuring that there's equitable distribution of the, of the hour, hourly wages, so that we don't reach the overtime level. And lastly, is the comp time, how that has impacted on our overtime. Um, do we have a substantial amount of comp time? Are we paying the substitutes, the people that take the comp time, whether it's out of the paras or the professionals?
Professionals don't get comp time.
Only the, only, only the paras.
And those are usually not substitute-filled positions.
Okay, so when they're, so if you have a para gone for a week, nobody's there?
Everybody around them picks up the slack. Most commonly. Most commonly.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. LaFoix.
Joe.
Yes, sir.
That, that business of Joe Blow getting more comp time than me, or more Joe Blow getting more overtime than me, echoes back when we got on the board, they would complain about that.
I know, but they have a big.
Until the day we get off the board, there'll still be complaining about it.
Well, I don't, I don't mind the complaining, um, but if we're paying overtime to people over forty hours, and there are other employees that only have thirty-two, that's just not the way.
I thought Dr. Mackey was taking care of that. The transportation people were taken care of. Yeah.
Cause I'll fix.
Okay, Jose.
I'm, I'm done. I'm done with this page.
Oh, no, not.
Ms. Howard.
I'm done with that page.
If you could start with the teachers.
Yes, sir.
And then go mid, mid, and then stipend, that's not a challenge.
All righty. Um, for the teacher, nurse librarian, we are recommending the step, which includes a twelve hundred dollar increase. That means that the starting pay for our, um, bachelor's first year or zero-year teachers will go from forty-five, one fifty, to forty-six, three fifty.
What pay do you?
Um, teacher, nurse librarian.
Option one.
Um, that would mean that the differential that's already in place for masters would remain the same, so everybody would just move kind of together on the step. However, based upon the TASB compensation review in two thousand and ten, they do recommend that we, um, flat-rate our masters' pay. Currently, right now, between the different years, there's not a consistent, um, pay differential. For example, on the current rates, you can kind of look at them in that, you know, there may be a difference of eight hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred on some of them. So what TASB is recommended for budgeting purposes is that we go ahead and flat-rate it. I presented two options to the superintendent, and the superintendent recommends that, in addition to giving the step increase, which includes the twelve hundred dollars, that we flat-rate the master's stipends in option three at fifteen hundred dollars. Which means that the total increase for teacher, nurse librarians to receive the step will be one point nine million dollars.
I'm not sure, Ms. Howard.
Okay, all righty. So the, the overall proposal, we have not given an increase to these teachers in three years, okay? And we have actually collapsed years zero through three, um, which means that now we're going to un-collapse that, and we're going to make the starting pay for teachers coming into the district forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That's a step increase that includes the twelve hundred, and then you can see, um, on that first page there, how it would look, um, in second, uh, for the subsequent years following, okay?
Before you go further, right there, what is average starting pay for the bachelor's degree department, five areas where we think we could join the hard time?
This, this would still leave us in third place.
Third place, okay, that's what I would do.
Um, but that is third place before they do their increases.
Before they do theirs, they could come in and give.
I understand, this is third place right now.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And remember, this is just to the two thousand and ten report. We're, we're still that behind.
Yes, but what I wanna, what I'm asking is, is forty-six, three fifty is where in relation to the current pay scale?
Before, right, before all school districts go to present their budgets this year.
Yes, right now.
Third. But based upon my knowledge of what I know the other school districts are doing, we are still gonna be in at least fourth or fifth place.
Okay, somebody dies and loses a billion, we're gonna, we're not gonna catch up. I'm not even.
The way to catch up with that is we need to be around forty-seven one, starting out.
Do you think you're gonna give a thousand?
Yes, yes.
And that will still keep us in third place?
Uh, that could put us up there in the top.
Yeah, it could put us.
Forty-seven one could put us in the top, in the, in the top three, depends on what they do. We'll, we should be at the, at the top three. Now, we have other districts that are calling us and wanna know what we're taking ours to, so they can match ours.
They're matching us.
They, they're waiting to see what we're gonna do.
No, we don't, we don't know. We don't have a.
Because we're in the first part of the ones that are doing our budget.
Yes, we're, because we do have our budget done in June, they have, they get there in August. So, so they, they're gonna know regardless, um, regardless. So, you know, I, you know, forty-six, three fifty, you know, until we know more about this budget, now, we could give more. But then, when it comes to giving a percentage to all the other employees, it's gonna cut into that.
Sure.
So that's what I'm saying, it, it, it's, you, you gotta balance this whole thing.
And where does it put the math?
Okay.
The math is on that.
Right.
So, I mean, when you're, what you said, what place are we in if we do that black?
Okay. And, and that's something I would like to stress, is not all school districts are paying a differential for masters degrees.
Which ones are?
Well, I would have to give you the exact report. I don't, I'm not gonna say which ones for sure.
Let me tell you who I'm concerned with. If the other board members are concerned with somebody else, they can, they can say. Northeast.
They do.
Church Cibolo.
They do.
Northside.
They do.
And SAIC.
They, I believe they do not.
Those are the four primary competitors. I don't feel like we have too much to worry about, you know, Harland Hill always.
They're gonna match us.
They're gonna match us.
Yes.
They're gonna match us.
And certainly, I'm not concerned at all about Edgewood, and I'm not concerned about these.
What are you saying we need to do, Mr. Dare? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm saying that we need to be competitive with those four. And that's where we're losing, I think.
If you wanna be competitive, then we need to start at forty-seven one.
And then the flat-rate masters at fifteen hundred.
Give us a number that, you know, show us what that's gonna cost. Forty-seven.
Wait, 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 forty-seven. If you go.
We have to do it, ma'am.
When you move that forty-seven one, that means there's gonna be a reaction, gonna have to move everyone under there.
I understand that. I understand that. I wanna see the bottom-line number, see what, what.
It was one that says.
You know, if, you know, we don't have to get to forty-seven one, if we get to forty-six, eight, you know, what's that, what's that gonna do for us, you know? You know, I, it's just, uh, I mean, we're trying to stay competitive with these, uh, other school districts. You know, it, it's, uh, the big fish theory, you know, the big fish is gonna eat the little fish. They're gonna take our people, and we're gonna take people from somewhere else. You know, that's just the way, that's the way of the world.
But the other question is.
Yeah. Well, that's true, you know, but that, but we have to look into it.
But here's what I do. I don't care what anybody else does. What I care about is what we can do for our teachers, employees, the right way. we can do for our teachers, employees, and that way. I, I, I don't, I hate comparison, I just, I mean, I know what you're going at, but I don't wanna compare. I don't care what everybody else does, I wanna know what Judson does, and what we can afford, and how we can do it across the board to take care of our people.
I really do think-
If you take care of our people, they'll take care of us and not leave.
The bottom line here is, is that we have not taken care of our people for three years. And so, at this point, I think any gesture would be welcome.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, give you three seconds.
That was the reason why.
Yeah, we, we didn't have the funds, and we did, we did, I mean, the board authorized retention incentive, which some districts didn't do that, you know, it's a different district, different things.
And that was generous.
Different amounts. And, and for some of our employees, not teachers necessarily, but the rest of the group of employees, the twelve-hundred dollars that y'all authorized is a lot more, a lot more than they would've gotten through a raise.
Yeah.
And then the year prior to that, the board also authorized to increase the health insurance contribution to the employees, which is also an annual of about six-hundred thousand dollars. So just kinda, don't, just keep that in mind, I just wanna keep it in perspective, it's like, we haven't, it's not like we haven't done nothing, we have done, or we have done something.
We have done something, and we realize why we didn't give raises, you know? And we, and we know that some of those school districts that did give raises, they're in their fund balance, you know, they're, they're having trouble now.
And I wanna correct that, because we did give a raise oh-nine, oh-ten.
Nine, ten, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen, yes. This is the third year.
This is year three.
I was on a, a question and answer with a group, and they told me, no, that I was wrong, we did not give a raise.
I'm gonna check, I'll check, but I think this is, this is the third year, so this is the third year, the nine, ten would've been one of the years.
Yes, I know, that's what I said, three years, they said, no, four years. I said, wait a minute, the first year that I came in, I know that they gave a raise. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
So, moving on, so of course, our recommendation would be to flat-rate the masters and to increase the bachelors up to the forty-six, three-fifty. The next packet that you're gonna be looking at, the top pages there would reflect the recommendation to do a midpoint increase for two percent for all pay grades in professional educators, professional operations, clerical, technical, and then a four percent midpoint increase in manual trades. So basically, by shifting up the midpoint there, it doesn't necessarily give that raise to everybody, what it does is it just allows us to be more competitive for people coming into the district, that the pay is set a little higher than it has been. The subsequent pages there, we'll, we're gonna talk about the actual recommendation for increase. These are based upon TASB recommendations, as Dr. Mackey earlier stated, just to bring certain groups of employees into the ninetieth percentile of fair market value. So on page three of that packet, you have first-round increase recommendations, these are positions that were identified by TASB, and the percentage rates that would be required in order to bring them up into the ninetieth percentile with the percentage estimate increased total cost for the district. Professional educators, we wanna take into consideration a couple of the high school administrative positions are not competitive or comparable to other districts. All assistant principals at the high school and middle school, a one percent. The data research specialist in the district is twelve percent below anybody else in the city. We are also looking at a small increase for the athletic directors, and our LSSPs are very underpaid by four percent. In the professional operations department, the secretary to the Board of Trustees is five percent below. In child nutrition, yes.
On, on the professional educators, okay? When you say the assistant principal, high school, middle school, two-hundred-and-seven days to two-hundred-and-sixteen, one percent, sixteen-thousand-one, sixty-one, that's the total?
For all of them.
For all, okay, okay, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, that's not per person, sir. Oh, no.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir, no, that's, that's if you gave the, that percentage to all of them.
Professional operators, no.
Right, um, in professional operations, as you can see, we did embed some of the identified manual trades positions, child nutrition supervisors, the network administrator, technology position being paid nineteen percent less than anybody else in the city. And that's, and we're losing technology folks. PMS, our PMS coordinator, network manager, and in payroll, we have a deficiency. Amongst the clerical, technical staff, the district offices receptionists, those are underpaid by eight percent. The PMS clerks at elementary level are underpaid by eleven percent, library aides underpaid by twelve percent, the middle school attendants and PMS clerks are underpaid by six, technology aides across the district under by four, and there are a couple of HR positions that are still under by twelve percent. In manual trades, Dr. Mackey definitely wanted us to address the custodial's transportation and child nutrition divisions, and so you can see there that this recommendation will embrace a two percent increase above the midpoint increase that we're already recommending for bus drivers, three percent for monitors, three percent in addition for custodians. You've got some child nutrition positions there also at three percent. And then, some of our maintenance positions, groundskeepers are below by five, and that's a manual labor position. Our mechanics, air conditioning mechanics, and also our vehicle mechanics are underpaid. And significantly underpaid is our warehouse supervisor by nineteen percent.
One person?
One.
Those child nutrition, they come out of a different fund, right? So they're not a, okay.
I just wanted to show you line item, what the recommendations would be.
Okay, go forward.
So you're looking at a, a first-round increase just to these targeted positions of approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars.
Question. Are therapists, like, are they, was it three-hundred thousand we spent last month on contract and therapists? I didn't see those in here.
And the reason that you didn't is because they're paid on the teacher pay scale. I will be, when I present the compensation plan to you all this year, as part of the TASB recommendation, is I'm going to recommend that we move them off of the teacher pay scale and set them into a professional pay, pay grade. That'll give us a little more liberty to be a little more competitive.
The reason I brought that up, Mr. Dare, is three hundred, what was it, did I say three-hundred thousand a month?
That were contracted.
Three-hundred thousand, we're spending three-hundred thousand a month contract.
To some of our former staff, they leave us to go work for these agents.
Because they may be a lot more.
Those are smart. And if you'll look on the next page, Dr. Mackey is proposing a two percent step increase for the bus drivers on their pay scale. Alright, we did originally have some recommendations, you all had actually requested me last year to make sure that this year's stipend process included stakeholder voices, and so this year we did have a committee of individuals from across the district, administrative, teachers, we even had a paraprofessional on the team that looked at stipends. However, after review, we have decided that it would be not appropriate at this time because we're probably looking at some other increases that we're gonna need to have to evaluate in June. So at this time, I would recommend that we maintain the current twelve, thirteen stipend list for the thirteen, fourteen year.
And this is to make sure that these people that are receiving this, they understand this is going to be your stipend.
Right, and that's-
And ahead of time, I think Mr. Selier is the one that's like-
So there's no question.
You know, as long as they know ahead of time, and I think, this is it. This is, if, if you wanna stipend, this is going to be it.
Correct.
It's not gonna be any less, not gonna be anymore.
Correct.
Okay, yes, sir.
Before we get too further with the stipends, it sounds like it's pretty much closed at this point, but I do have some questions to follow up on, you were talking about.
Okay, before you go back, you wanna ask about the stipends?
No.
Okay, I got some questions on the other part, too. Can we finish the stipends before you go back?
They're done, Mr. Dare.
That's it.
They're, they're all here?
Yes, ma'am.
The other night, we, we had the bowling people, I don't, they don't get a stipend?
No.
Do they work out for hours?
Yes, ma'am, but that's considered a club sport, and so we don't have UIL competition for that.
So, I know what you said, and I agree with not changing for any of the recommendations and lowering anything. I'd like to see what the committee and what they came up with.
You were presented that in your board book, and so you may look at that comparison. A lot of the reductions-
What was, what was your, after sitting in that committee, I mean, we know this is a paper, when you talked with the people?
Mm-hmm.
What was your feel? Did you feel that you had a committee that was wanting to be fair and equitable?
Absolutely.
So can you explain to me, Dr. Mackey, why there was a recommended decrease, you did recommend a decrease?
I can address some of this. When we, the predominant decreases actually were in special education. We have some individuals in special education that are receiving to the tune of fourteen-thousand dollars in stipends.
Okay.
If we would appropriately set them on the pay scale, we would not have to stipend them, because they would be compensated through their regular salary wages.
So are you going, like, the position that Dr. society was just talking about?
Exactly.
So are you going to recommend that? So then when you do that, then we'll change this?
Yes, those would be removed off of the stipend list entirely.
Okay, so you're gonna track that? Okay, alright, thank you, Dr. Macias.
You're welcome.
So the stipends will say the same as the previous year. I guess, when you tell the committee, I'm sort of, they put a lot of hours in, that's one thing that I'm always talking about, we want that employee involvement, but then we're, nothing's done. So of course, make sure you traded them, we're very thankful for their support and their efforts, and we didn't ignore them, we'll probably evaluate that going forward, but we don't want, you know, we want people to feel good about what they did.
Absolutely.
But if, Charlie, just a question, if we end up paying this increase that's being proposed, and if all of a sudden our funds dry up, aren't we responsible to then pull from the maintenance operating funds to pay that salary?
Yes, that, that would be correct. If that were the, that were the case, although, we'll tell you that, on an annual basis, the child nutrition program adds to the fund balance quite significantly every year, and especially since the federal government is mandating that we continue to increase lunch prices, I think it would be a long time before we ran into the kind of scenario you're talking about. If, as long as we're careful with everything else that we're doing, we should be okay.
We are gonna have an increase?
Yeah, I think it's, they said five cents.
Yeah, well, some school district, who, Northside?
Northside, and or the ten cents?
Yeah.
We have to go up ten cents.
Yeah, there's a, there's a minimum requirement.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that's gonna be the recommendation.
Good question.
Okay. What, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. If you got, one question?
Just one, one of nutrition funds, now, we go up that ten percent, I know we had some money in there, we're doing good, do we have the leeway to use that money for anything in nutrition? You know, for new kitchens, and outdoor-
Yeah, let me kinda tell you, yeah, let me kinda tell you all some that, that we're working on. Child nutrition is a federal program, the money we get from the federal government. And all, not all, the majority of the federal programs allow you to claim what's called an indirect cost rate against, against those federal programs, like for overhead administration and what have you. So when there're two diff-, there're two different rates that we do, there's a, one's called restricted, and one's called unrestricted. But for the child nutrition program, we get to call what's called the unrestricted rate. And so what we're doing right now is we're working with the Texas Department of Agriculture to make sure that we can do the formula properly, we don't wanna make any errors in how we're gonna calculate it, because it's gonna be the first time we ever do this, that we're gonna charge them this indirect cost rate, and we're gonna transfer money from the child nutrition program to the general operating fund. And, and right now, based on what we've seen, it's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven-hundred thousand dollars that, and that's also because of their fund balance, they have a lot of funds in their, in their account. And so we're gonna take that money and, with approval of TDA, which Dare said, yeah, we could do it, it's one of the things that Dare allows us to do, and we're gonna transfer that money to the general operating fund. So just, and, and I think, if y'all remember when Gibson Consulting was here, we kinda talked about that a little bit, and we said, yes, we just need to be careful that we don't overtake too much, and then later we're gonna have to be trying to float and get them out of trouble, or in fact, that, kinda going back to what you were mentioning a while ago. So we're kinda looking at that right now, and at some point, we will be bringing it to the board, telling y'all that we're gonna, we're gonna be making that transfer, once we can calculate that.
Okay, I have one to follow up from the question.
Okay, and then, Mr. Ford.
Very well. The, I guess, talk to me a little bit about sustainability. I know that you're proposing these increases, we talked about forty-seven-one being really wanting to be competitive, I think the recommendation was forty-six, three-fifty to kinda put us up a little bit, but that, I, I don't know, if we're talking sustaining our competitiveness in this area, we're looking right now at this year's budget, are we projecting for the following year?
You can not go down when you go up.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get at. So, if, if we've already kinda set that as our new benchmark, and we're trying to plan and not lose teachers two years, three years from now, has there been some talk about what those projections would look like? Are we gonna say we're not gonna increase salaries for the next two, three years probably?
No, and, and we, we have, we're looking at those things, we're kinda, we have a, a plan, and we are also, within that plan, incorporating things like, when the bond passes, that we're gonna need new staff at a new elementary school at a certain point in time, we're gonna need new staff at a new high school at a certain point in time, you know, beyond the people that we transfer because of the movie, and new, things like that, so we're, all those things go into the picture to make sure that, the last thing we wanna do is open a facility or build it and not have the money to, to staff it. And so, yes, we look at all that to try to make sure that we can, like you said, be reasonable in what we're doing now, to make sure that we, when we go to the long term, we have sufficient funds to maintain what we're doing and be able to hire the new staff that we're gonna need when we build those new facilities.
And, and don't, again, one of the perceptions in Judson, Gilbert is leading to, employees go to bigger districts, and we've got to require professionals from smaller districts. I, I believe that trend has probably happened with this district for a long time, so there's probably numbers that'll show what our loss is in terms of employees, and, every year, and based on that, have we seen a significant deviation in employee transfers or movement?
No, but part of that was impacted because the last couple of years, there's been reductions across the state. So movement has actually been limited because people are, the economy, they're, they don't wanna take the risk of losing a job and not being able to find another one, so-
So it's been free.
It's, it's, it's ver-, it's very steady. We're not seeing an increase, we're not seeing a huge exodus. What we are seeing, though, is more retirees are exiting, but that's just because, yeah, they're retired.
It depends.
One other thought, when comparing salaries, I know that we're using TASB information, which is different, but we're doing that analysis with comparative districts in this county, in Bear County.
Yes.
I, I don't know if we did that same comparison with districts of the same class, in terms of student, or-
Absolutely.
So we're doing two different analyses in terms of-
We can do the analysis with the parent, but you know, time, and in terms of trying to come together with the midpoint and the salary.
Yes, when I present information to the superintendent, I run reports from several different regions in the state to use school districts that have comparable enrollment amount of employees, and sometimes even, we'll, we'll drill it all the way down to type of demographic of the students they're serving. So we use those comparables to determine what our, our identicals look like out, out there. Now, the differences are, is that we have to consider what the San Antonio economy is. We have been very stable compared to some other cities in, in Texas. So it may, we look quite different, being the same size, the same, what have you, we look different because our economy has been a little more stable. And so, not only do we use our local area, we'll go across the state, and then at, sometimes we look at districts that are up and coming, that are like us, that are, have similar gross rates and what have you. So it's not just, I'm not just bringing you something, Mr. Macias, that TASB said, but certainly, I'm using a lot of the same reporting that TASB used to make their recommendations in two thousand and ten.
That gives me an understanding, um, how you brought the information to the library, um, I'm good right now.
Mr. Foff, and then, forgive me.
Something in the paper said, um, the cost of meals, did you see it?
I did not.
Yes.
Did you see it like that?
Yes.
Ten cents.
Ten cents increase.
Are we adding a few cent to it?
We're, we're, we're arguing.
I was sleeping, I missed that one.
We are.
At least I'm honest.
It's your turn to watch him.
Uh, my turn to watch him?
You get over here.
I'm old, man.
Go, go ahead.
Um, when we look at, you know, where we're losing teachers and such, you know, we look at it on, I, I know it's pretty steady, you know, it's not, you think sometimes it's fighting, but it really doesn't. But it's fights at campuses, you know, and that's where, you know, you have some campuses where you're losing a lot of teachers, and you have other campuses, and I'm not talking just retirement, I'm talking, hey, I'm getting out of here, you know, and then you have other campuses that, you know, you keep them, who, uh, we used to get a report on the by-campus, and, uh, it was broken down, I'd like to see that again, like that.
You're talking about exit by camp, not by name?
No, no, I don't care by name, just, well, I mean, we get the name, but I want, I want them in the format where they're by-campus, because before they, you put it in alphabetical or something.
What they're teaching.
Well, but, but, but what you gotta put that perspective to, Gilbert, is why they left that campus, 'cause you get, 'cause it was a campus was poorly performing, you put a principal in there, and it's turnaround, and they don't like the new rules, where you have a bad leader, where you have a bad leader, and all the good teachers are valiant. So, that data in of itself, raw data-
But it will give you a, it will give you a, to look at a point where you can say, okay, well, what's going on at, uh, you know, Olympia Hill?
Out here with the campuses, they're still exiting year after year.
You have to figure out why that data is the way it is.
Well, you have to have the data to look at it first, you know?
Hey, uh, if you look at the survey, that, uh, who made that survey, Dr. Mackey, the one?
The T A S B Employee Satisfaction Survey.
Yes, from every campus.
Yes, sir.
Right, if you look at that, you, you can look at a lot of data there, sir, look at a lot of data.
Well, my point was, raw data itself, that interpretation of numbers.
Well, but you have to have it to start.
The data driven?
Well, okay, wake up Richard over there.
It's your turn to watch.
Okay, um-
That's all I have, sir.
That's all, okay, yes, ma'am.
Based on what Mr. Floyd said, I'd like to know, um, what's the transfer list look like?
This year, we have, um, ninety-eight professional educators who signed up on the transfer list, um, and that was actually distributed to all administrators today. Um, it looks about average.
So, that same, that same theory that Miss Ford was talking about would apply to the transfer list, some schools have more people requesting transfer.
Right, but I, I would like to stress that this year, I really made a concerted effort to communicate to our educators that, um, if they had a new certificate, and they were wanting to try a different grade level, or trying to get, you know, go from elementary to middle or high, we really encouraged them, and we also really encouraged that, um, they weren't trying to escape an environment or a culture, you know. Um, also, nobody goes on the transfer list if they're on a Tino or a growth plan, um, so, I, I wouldn't necessarily use that as a reflection that people don't wanna be at a particular campus, because there's a lot of different reasons why people get on the transfer list.
Well, certainly, some of them get on there to be closer to their homes, or closer to their base there.
There's also a perception that some of our schools are easier, Rolling Meadows is easier than to work at Hard Village, not because of the principal, but because you have to do more tutoring, and, yes.
The board member.
And so, you know, a lot of times, well, a lot of times, if you look at the transfer list, everybody wants to go to Olympia and Rolling Meadows, just, again, perception.
Well, and also, then, that way, you know, you have a more stable home environment in different parts of there, you know? You know, so, that's why it seems easier, you know, it may not be easier, but it may seem easier, because, you know, you have two parent homes, a lot more-
No, absolutely, but some of our teachers rather be in a school like that, and some of them need to be in a school like that, rather, they're not really cut out for those schools.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead, and, uh, I'm going to adjourn, and we'll catch up on the next budget meeting, which is-
We didn't talk about this page with the percentages.
Yes, ma'am.
She presented, but nobody said.
You were sleeping too.
Yeah, okay, let me just ask about this, that, that's our, on this page, what I presented before, um, 'cause I think part of the budget process, if I recall, Dr. Mackey was like trying to find out why the board felt about this. So, Dr. Mackey, um, I wholeheartedly will agree with the child nutrition increase, we know where that money's coming from, that's not a question, and if any of the board disagrees, please let Dr. Mackey know now, 'cause I've been asking. And then, the L S S P, I would agree with, uh, along with what Mrs. Salya said, related to the, what are those other people called?
O T P T.
O T P T, yeah, those people, um, because we did pay a lot of money for those.
Okay.
Um, the rest of the, of the percentage increases, I need to know how many employees are in those boxes, in order to really know how much money we're talking about.
The bottom line is two hundred and ninety-one thousand.
I know, but I, I wanna know how many people are being impacted, if I'm giving twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars to custodians, how many custodians are we talking about? Are we talking about five, we're gonna divide twenty-three thousand by five people?
That's every custodian in the district.
I know, so, if you just give me the numbers of how many employees are in those categories, that'll give us, us an idea of how much money we're talking on each one. Um, I can agree with, with, um, Dr. Mackey on the maintaining of the stipend, because we, we've had a meeting, and you presented, and so I need to tell you what I could just automatically agree with. Otherwise, we're just wasting time.
But, but, but Miss Hader.
We're not voting, I'm just telling-
Right, but what I was gonna say, this is just to bring them up to par according to the report.
I, I understand.
This is not, uh, figures that they made up and say, oh, this one gets six, oh, this one gets twelve.
But you see, the bottom, right, but the bottom line of it is, like one of them said earlier, we still have to have the money. So, those, the problem is so significant, that regardless, I'm willing to step out without knowing whether we have the money on those three positions, because those are critical areas, and I think, if we can agree on the criticalness, that would help in our recruiting for those areas right now, rather than we're saying we're gonna wait till June to determine whether we're gonna pay our S S Ps, or whoever they are, L S S Ps, more, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Dare, however, we can give you the numbers on this right, on this right here. However, the fair market value is that we need to get this, because it still hurts us if these people leave.
Oh, I understand, and I'm not saying that I'm not in, I'm not in agreement with these, I'm just saying, without any further data, those three areas are so bad that we need to just put that on the books, if you have it in the May board meeting, I'll vote for that in May.
I'll, I'll put the numbers on, on all of these, so, then, when we go through the vote, y'all can tell us what you want.
Right, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other, okay, we shall see you in the next one, May twentieth.
May twentieth, all right?
We may or we may not.